Good evening, everybody. So we'll start with a roll call.
Mark Carlton.
Dan Murphy.
Steve Nelson.
Aaron Norman.
Katie Missfow. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
It stands one nation.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so we are at 1.3 Agenda Review and Approval. Does anybody have any changes besides myself to the agenda?
You know, I have one item. Can we call it 5.7 under New Business?
Yeah.
And it is to chair with the board a grant opportunity through the Gordon Elwood Foundation, and asking your approval for us to write a grant for it. So it's a grant approval through Gordon Elwood Foundation.
Okay, is everyone okay with that agenda change?
Yes.
I'm with me.
Hi. And I would add 5.8 COVID Hazard Pay for employees at the school district, if that's okay with everyone. Are we okay with said changes?
Yes. I make a motion, we approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we are at 2.0 Consent Agenda, 2.1 Correction Approval of Regular Meeting Minutes for February 14, 2022, and February 28, 2022. Does anybody have correction to those?
I did not.
I have one thought, Julie, in the Listening Session minutes, it says to see the sign-in sheet for who all was there. Is that available?
Um, yes. Actually, what I have is a sign-in sheet for those who signed in to speak.
Okay, it just wasn't in our packet, huh?
No, I got that after the fact, but you, I can certainly get you a copy.
That would be awesome. Thank you. That was my only question. Does anyone else have any?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for February 14 and February 28, 2022?
I'll make motions.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. 3.0 Communication Report Superintendent Report Update, Dr. Long.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, from the perspective of superintendent, I really appreciate the increased communication that has been occurring just in the last several weeks with patrons and parents. I think we're all sensing some relief and some COVID changes that were anticipated. Today was our first day where masks were optional at our school, and saw a lot of smiles, which, that's one of the hard things with masks, you don't get to see the rest of people's faces. We did have some students, not a lot, but some students who chose to wear masks, didn't have any issues with anyone saying anything unkind to anyone else about their choices, and just a lot of happy kids to be here. I think it really helped being on daylight saving time and knowing there's going to be a longer evening to be outside and all that, too. But it was, it was a really good day. Things that we're working on from a superintendent perspective, we're working on growing, building our budget for the coming year. We are looking at, still recruiting people for our Budget Committee, but we're getting kind of close to the deadline on it. We have one more board meeting where we could add someone. You do have someone that you'll be looking at today for approval to join the Budget Committee. And then, just, it's just, I think we're all looking forward to a little break at spring break, and then the sprint in the spring when the weather gets even better, and we have a lot of activities going on. So, as a superintendent, that would be my perspective on things. We're working really hard, and we're going to see, we're going to have some staffing changes for next year. People are making decisions about what they want to do next, or how they want to move forward, and we just really appreciate those employees who've been a part of our organization and help to serve kids. You want the Charter School report?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Well, in your packet, you have our enrollment. You can see our enrollment is currently at 183 students. We had several students exit from our high school into other programs, distance learning programs to finish up our alternative options for them. But basically, we're getting really jazzed at the school level about things occurring down at the Natural Resource Center. We're already planning for our Earth Day event in April. We have a group of excited soph- juniors who are hoping to pull together a prom down at the NRC in May. And I met with our consultant, our communications consultant, is going to help us jazz up our information and invite people to an open house sometime in mid to late May, where we can invite people who haven't attended our school to come see what we're all about. Sports, we shifted. We have a middle school track and field program going on, and quite a few kids have turned out. I think we ordered 35 uniforms for that, because we haven't really had a track and field team before, so that's a really exciting thing. We did learn just this week that the conference we belong to, which is SOMSAC, Southern Oregon Middle School Athletic Conference, they are not allowing fifth graders to compete in track. They can practice, they can be on a relay team, but as far as the other things. So that's a change from what we were expecting, but we still have a lot of kids out at the middle school level. We don't really have a lot happening at the high school lower on track, but I think our high school kids are focusing on some service, community service project things this spring, and being involved in other ways. Yeah, so I'm open. Any questions? Anyone has any questions for me about the Charter School? We will. I have started the review of the Charter School Charter. The revisions we made five years ago seem to have helped us lay in things on an even keel, but we will be looking at needing to renew that this June.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All sounds really awesome. We're going to move on to 3.4 Financial, oh no, 3.3 Review of the Bills with Miss Akin. Did anybody have any questions about the bills we paid?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
The number one, ADM.
That was to calibrate the wrestling scales. They have to do that every year.
Then Briggs Data Solutions, which is the fourth one down.
And that is the Cisco ASA Support Smart Net. It is a filtering support through Cisco.
Then on page three, the Special Markets Insurance Consultants.
That is the bond insurance that we pay for Dr. Long every year.
That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody else have any questions about the bills we paid?
I just love the response that Rachel always has. She's ready. She's got the answer. She's got her dukes up, and she's ready with all the answers. Love it.
So I have to say, I sat this afternoon, and I was getting ready to prepare my stuff, and I went through all the bills. I'm like, oh, I wonder if he'll pick this one. So I wrote it down already, and all of those ones I already had. So, yay.
Good job, Rachel. Okay, so we're going to move on to 3.4, our financials, I'm running with Miss Akin.
I don't have a whole lot. We're, we're doing really, really well, remaining very steady. We're running about 23% in expenditures below our revenue, which is good. That's going to help with some things that we have coming down the pike. I didn't have anything in the month that caused concern or questions. I will just set out a reminder that we're still looking for Budget Committee members, and that first meeting date is May 4th at 6 o'clock. So just as a reminder, we like to do one for one, but if we don't get that, that's okay. We just declare the vacancies at the beginning of the Budget Committee, Budget Committee meeting, and then we can continue on. I did receive the initial 22, 23 state school fund estimate. I will tell you that it's $275,000 less than the November 21, 22 estimate that we currently have. So we're already starting off $275,000 lower than what we're going to end the year with. Part of that has to do with the ADM. ADM was originally calculated at 220, and we had to adjust that to 175, and that was for the difference in losing the, I think we're at like 40, 43 students, I think, in whole. And then, it would have been a lot larger, but because the realignment within the state and all the other students that are missing, it only impacted us the $275,000 rather than what could have potentially been upwards of $400,000. So, us staying at the 23% below in expenditures is a good thing, because we're already going to start off the 22, 23 year, a little behind where we would like to. So I hope that we can remain steady for the remainder of the year. I, I don't foresee a problem with that. And I welcome any questions that you guys might have, concerns.
So, Rachel, how are we doing on expenditures compared to our budget? Are we, are we a little bit under what our budget is?
Yeah, we're 23% under our budget.
Okay. And how much was that?
I didn't calculate the dollar amount, but I can certainly can.
That, that reflects, Rachel, doesn't it, some positions that we picked up using Esser Funds this year that we had budgeted for, two teaching positions, two classified positions, I believe.
Yes, it does. It doesn't, it does include those, I, because they are being currently charged to Esser.
And then also, we have not yet filled our principal position, so we have a, an hourly arrangement with the storeman, but there's been some savings there, and then for our facilities manager position, too. So, the, the, the Esser Funds have offset that, but it's allowed us more flexibility in our general fund.
Yeah. You, you have absorbed those two positions. You're still, you haven't saved as much with the principal position, because you are paying for some of that through general fund. So it's, she's like half and half, depending on how hours she's working. So that, that's where some of that savings comes into play.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Thank you so much, Rachel. We are going to move on to 3.5 ESSSA Site Council Parent Involvement Report, Miss Freeman.
Hello. So we had a parent, Site Council Parent Meeting last Wednesday. We had two whole parents show up, but we had a really great conversation, and we were able to fulfill our obligation to do our title, Annual Title I Meeting, and share our current grants with those participants that were there. And we had some discussion on what the parents, the two that were there, would like to see. We just brainstormed on some parent involvement ideas, and we'll bring that to you once we kind of get some more ideas of where we're going. And then, the parents are going to, we're going to meet again in April. I think it's April 8, and we're going to be working on our parent, Title I Parent Plan. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Nope. I have a question.
I'm back.
Uh, come back. Roger that. At the Listening Session, we had a pretty good turnout, lots of folks wanting to voice their opinions. With the, I remember kind of re-stating back to the group about parental involvement and getting involved at your school. With COVID ending and the safeguards and all that, is there a way to get the word out more? Or how do we increase the parental involvement advertising? And I say that with the, you know, defensibility that, you know, we have, if it's pretty open, and it's, it's made known that these are available every month. I don't know if you remember, some of the parents kind of saying, you know, how do we come to the board meetings, and how do we get involved? Julie, it's been, I would say dismal the last several years for people coming to your meeting there. How do we increase those numbers? How do we do a better job?
Well, I think, I think I need to buy new shoes and new outfits, number one.
Right.
And then, basically, it's getting the parents involved and doing it more collaboration with, you know, what, what our, our school needs, our staffing needs, our teachers' needs, our administration needs, and having everybody work together. And we actually did discuss that a little bit, of getting maybe a volunteer system better in place, you know, where you actually create jobs that are needed, wanted, so everybody is doing something that's worthwhile, and makes everybody feel like they're participating where they can, when they can. So we can, we'll move forward on that. This is, this is something, though, that I've asked the girls that were there, and I think this, they're a great start to, they really are the, what, the key to getting those parents involved, because they are the parents. So we're kind of hoping that they can reach out to more people, and we can get this going. Katie, do you have anything to add?
I, I do. Julie, I have my notes. If Aaron's kind of curious what we talked about in the meeting.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not putting this on you, Julie, at all. I'm just merely saying, let's look at this as a positive thing going into the future, and, and making sure we have the mechanism. The mechanism's already there for, for folks to show up and be involved. I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe more advertising, word of mouth, great. And I would just back it up with, you know, if those kind of comments come back at another Listening Session, or as things open up more and more, we want to be able to point to them and say, hey, you know, Julie Freeman has sponsored this parental involvement thing for years, and you know, again, I made the comment in our Listening Session that, you know, parents, you guys out there, get involved. And this is just one mechanism for it.
Yep, no, no.
You're right, not pointing fingers, not pushing blame, or anything. I'm just saying, let's grow your program, or let's, there you go.
I am with you. I am with you, and I think that we can do that. It's been a long time here, and everybody's eager, and we're just going to start working towards that, Aaron.
Perfect.
Julie, can I share my notes and thoughts on it real quick?
Absolutely.
So, Aaron, I, I do, actually, for quite a few years now, I've run the Parent Involvement Club, and if we run an event or something at the school, it is insane how many parents we could get involved in an actual event. A Site Council meeting, not so much. But, a couple of my notes from the meeting that we had is getting parent volunteers back in the school, more communication with teachers, the, getting our library open again. Somebody was quite interested in a land lab at the NRC. I was a little curious about the school being more involved with the landing from the meeting. We talked about having high school students tutor their peers or younger students, and getting a community service credit, better access to the teachers, having their email addresses on the website, and just a little bit more communication with the teachers. We really want to host a talent show in May. And the next Site Council meeting, I believe we scheduled for April 6 at 6:00 PM.
And those are my. And I also have, Katie, you guys talked about, would like to get some music back in the school.
I left that off, because I didn't even know if we could accomplish that, but that was a discussion topic.
Yep.
Yep.
The dream.
It's back on my notes. And the, those are my notes from the meeting. But it was a really good meeting, and outside of the Site Council meeting, I, I've usually been pretty successful at getting parents involved in various events. And that's the end of my thoughts on this. Any more questions? Okay, so we're going to move on to 3.6 Bee Falls Community School Partnership, Mr. Murphy.
The preschool is working. Food pantry is on the second and fourth Fridays of each month. We have vacant board positions, if anyone is interested in them, serving on the board. That concludes my comments.
Thank you so much, Dan. Does anyone have any questions for Dan? I, I actually have a question. While we're on the landing, do we have a new director at the landing, Dan?
Repeat again, please.
Is there, is there somebody that replaced Bridget as director at the landing?
Not at this time.
No.
The only one we have available, and she's working part-time only due to her health.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dan. So we are at 3.7 Public Comment. Do we have any public that wanted to comment tonight?
You know, we didn't have anyone request a Zoom link, but I did receive an email today that I'll just read it to the record. It's from Emily Gettle. She is parent and a resident of Bee Falls. She writes, "Dr. Long and School Board, thank you so much for having an open forum for parents and community members to have a Listening Session. I absolutely, absolutely believe there is a wonderful collaboration and communication in the future for our community. I look forward to us working together for our kids and community. I urge you to look into getting our volunteers back in the schools. I am unsure what has to happen for that to occur, but I know that many parents and community members who would be willing to make time commitments for the betterment of our schools. Is there a way for the board to vote on that? I also enjoyed listening in on the parent involvement meeting with Julie and Katie the other day. Thank you for taking the time to listen to ideas and what can be done in the schools in the future. Once again, thank you for your commitment to our community. Thank you, Emily Gettle."
That's awesome. Thank you, Dr. Long. We can move on to 4.0, 4.1 Change in State COVID Requirements, Dr. Long.
Yes, one of the, we, we received a document, and it's posted on the website. I think it's in the board packet, too. It's called Ready Schools and Safe Learner Resiliency Framework for the 2021-22 School Year. This is the March 2 update, effective March 11. And in it, it outlines the things that have changed from the previous one, most notably, the ability to no longer require masks of students and staff on campus in our buildings. Today was our first day of implementing that, and there were lots of smiles around campus. There were some students who wore their mask, but I think what I really appreciated is that everyone was respectful of everyone else, and we didn't have any incidents of, of anything going on that would have made someone feel bad about their choice, whatever it was. And I'm hoping we can continue that, because that's really how we work best as a school. One, one of the concerns that still, that's still out there, though, is the state is expecting us to keep other mitigation, safety mitigation processes in place. So we have to kind of do a re-teaching that, just because we don't have to wear our masks in the cafeteria, doesn't mean that we're going to be sitting right next to our best friend. We still need to do distancing when we eat, and those types of things. And I appreciate, I've had several really robust, positive conversations with community members, already thinking of ways that they can come along the side of the school and help. There are some parents who are interested in getting some things going this summer in town, because that's kind of a downtime for kids when there's nothing really going on. And I just am excited that as we open back up, we're going to be able to maybe build on some of that enthusiasm. So I want to thank the board for spending time listening two weeks ago, because that spurred some other conversations. But I include this in the packet. We are going to go slowly on bringing volunteers back in, at least through this month. We have, we actually have a really bad stomach flu going around. And so, I, I think that people are a little hesitant to just have a, a lot of people converge on our schools, but it is looking like time to get back and rebuild some of those relationships, maybe have some projects that parents and community members can come alongside us and do. One of those I have mentioned to a couple people is, we're really looking at, on Friday, April 1, looking for parents and students, probably of kids in, in, you know, fifth grade and up, who might be willing to come out and spend three or four hours at the Natural Resource Center. We want to clean up just all the debris that's fallen, so it'll be really usable in, in April, May, and June, when we have it learning going on out there. We'll have more information come out about that in, in a la- a letter later this week. And the, the other, you know, I, even this morning, the bus driver's got a text, I think, from Julie at about 6:10 this morning, because I still have not nailed down whether the requirement for bus drivers to wear masks, even though everyone else didn't have to wear them, whether that truly have been waived. So I drove by the first student office in Medford, because they do all Medford's buses, and I bravely poked my head in the manager's office and said, "Hi, I'm Phil Long. I'm the superintendent of Bee Falls. I just need to know from you all, what did you all decide for your drivers?" And they said, "We got direction from ODE that it was a choice, not a requirement for bus drivers." So I know that's a relief for our bus drivers, and seems only fair since no one else has to wear masks on the bus. And so there's just some little wrinkles like that, that we're having to work out, make sure that we, we treat people fairly, and that we're, we're not overextending ourselves. So I wanted to give this to you, and I would welcome any questions from you around short term, what we're doing, and then long term.
Can I get some clarification on the requirements? Is it this, the, the social distancing aspect of it? We're telling our kids, the masks can come off, but then, a picture I was just painted by you is, in a cafeteria, we might have a teacher come by and say, "You're sitting too close to this person."
Actually, our kids are pretty well-trained, because we have, we have our seating set out, so there are places where kids sit, and they just go there. They just needed to know that, know that. We haven't completely reverted back to 2019, as far as what goes on, and we are.
But what's the language? I mean, what, what, is it a state thing, saying, "We're relaxing certain aspects of all these safety measures, and here's some that we're relaxing, the mask-wearing, but we're also still, but we're going to maintain the, a certain number, six feet apart, for a certain amount of time?" Or what, what is the hard language of any kind of restriction still being enforced?
I think they moved a lot of their language more to recommended rather than required, which allows us to not be as, you know.
Okay, okay. So if it's recommended, that's one thing. What is our school going to then enforce? If it's a recommendation versus enforced, are we going to go around and tell kids what? What, what are we telling our kids?
We've asked kids to sit on, sit where we have this eating in the lunchroom. We have the protocol. We've done it all year. Haven't really had issues there. The issues we have had, even with masks, were kids who didn't want to sit far apart, because they wanted to get into mischief, and were really there to eat for 15 minutes or so, and go outside and play. So it hasn't really been an issue, Aaron. So it hasn't really been an issue, Erin.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm following it. I'm I'm just, I'm if it's in the in the cafeteria and there's assigned seats to say stay a certain distance apart, but then would that still be in the classroom, the class, the the desks are still screwed at six feet apart? Is there going to be the capacity limit?
It's interesting in the classrooms, they allow three feet. In the cafeteria, they recommend six.
Right, and that's kind of where I'm going with all this is it seems like we're still trying to keep some, you know, these these restrictions alive or the power in control and in my opinion, it just is more policing of things, but if it's way, if it's coming down as law or whatever recommendations from the state and we have to do them, but there's also been this this language of recommended not, you know, enforced.
Absolutely. And right now I'm thankful that we're doing it because we got a stomach flu going around and.
Sure, sure. I mean, you know, I I think something like this would be, you know, if we're going to enforce rules, to me, enforcing kids wash their hands is way more important than walking into a cafeteria and saying you can't sit, you're sitting too close to your friend, you know.
So we ask kids to use hand sanitizer when they come in the cafeteria.
Right, right.
So no, I I agree, you know, we're 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 fighting, we're feeling our way gingerly towards normality with recommendations from the Health Department and our local Jackson County Health Department too, and yet um I think our kids have all been really cooperative and we've had fewer behavioral issues in the cafeteria with our seating plan. There's just a lot of things that were set up to to continue to do for a while.
I'm uh enjoying the newfound freedoms and the lifting of restrictions. I just needed some clarification on which ones we're still enforcing and for how long. Thank you.
No, that's great. Appreciate the question.
Well, and when, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
One of the bonuses, I only started reading, you know, the Ready School Safe Learning, the the reopening guidelines. It it is going back to district decisions and local control. And and I only read the first couple of pages, but that's what it looks like it's saying, correct, Dr. Long?
Yes, and so like in our classrooms, we reverted from using tables to desks. So in order to use desks, you space them apart so kids have ways to move around. So it kind of the three feet rule actually is sort of just a furniture design piece. So it's, are we requiring that? No, I, we we've actually had instances where kids have worked in groups and things like that. But you know, when you, when you're in in school, particularly in elementary school, there there actually are other benefits to having kids three feet apart in the classroom and they aren't just help, you know, they're also kids having space and other kids not in their space. So you know, we're 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 going to finish our plan this year, what we're doing and and then we can reboot next year when we see what our enrollment is and what our resources are.
Katie?
Yeah.
If you uh look at your Ready School Safe Learners bulletin or pamphlet that you refer to and then you go to page fifteen and you drop down to the second paragraph. It says, O H A and O D E strongly advise that schools support and promote physical distancing as described before below.
Yep.
And there says strive for at least three feet between students to the extent possible. But you know, that's an advisory, just like this whole pamphlet is advisory.
Which I think a lot of people have been pushing for is moving to advisory, leave it to the districts, leave it to local county officials. So I I think that was a nice change to see.
I think I think it's important to clarify when we're discussing it. The school made the decision to do X, not we were instructed to do this. So.
Going forward, that is what it looks like, yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions on four point one? Or comments? Okay, we can move on to four point two, the community listening session, Dr. Long.
Yes, um thought it'd be good for the board to have a chance to sort of just talk briefly about the community uh listening session and then um we did uh receive a a petition at that meeting and so the person who brought it didn't have copies for the board, so I've given you copies of that tonight because they emailed it to me today. So I want you to have that. And then I thought this might be a good place, once you've kind of debriefed, to have a discussion about the one issue that came up, which was around elementary discipline and but I I think probably to to have some comments from the board about the listening session might be encouraging to our community as well.
Okay, so we're going to open this up for comment. Does anybody want to go first?
Uh yeah, I'll I'll go first.
Go ahead, Mark.
So we had over over twenty comments made. Um I had notes, over twenty-five parents and kids attended. Um if it was very well received, I believe that we provided the opportunity for people to to come and voice their opinion, so I'm gonna uh keep pushing to see that on a monthly basis at these meetings. And uh the the general comment I got was parents were concerned, they're concerned with school, uh community. I thought there was one other thing, but but they're 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 concerned. Um so I'm glad we're listening to them. The that coupled with the amount of uh students being withdrawn from the state school system is something I think we all need to be aware of that that there's unsatisfied customers. And I'm not saying with us, the board, but that sounds like the state school system in general. Um, I would have liked to have asked a question, but I didn't. Of just how many of those parents there really are satisfied with the level, the quality uh that their uh kids are getting and I'm fairly certainly know that that there's some concerns there. So I think it's up to us to do what we can. I know the state um has got limits and laws and and rules and legislation and stuff all over the place that we just got to stay in between, but but um I think we need to be aware that there's some unsatisfied customers out there. Onto another comment they we heard a few things of was uh parents feel that uh at least several that spoke that the further schools move away from God, the more trouble we have. So is there still an after-school uh Bible program joyful news, good news, what have you? I haven't heard anything of that in a while. I don't know if it's available.
You know, with the the community church stopped having that at that point because it really was just we couldn't release kids because the state wouldn't let us and actually we didn't have kids for a year anyway. Um and then there was concern about it, but that really is a community, it's a church decision on that.
So.
As a public school, that's not something that we are in a position to promote or discourage.
So if the church wanted to do it, the school wouldn't have any issues.
There under under Oregon law, there is an opportunity for parents to release their kids for religious instruction. That's a certain amount of time a week.
Right.
And that's the auspices for that.
Okay.
So the we have in the past, I think coordinated that so that it was at the end of the day, so disrupt uh sort of prime uh instructional time, but really that would be a, that would be a a fake community decision.
Okay.
Mark?
Yeah.
I I can mention the joyful news, but one thing I can tell you is I think hopefully starting this spring uh the church is going to try to have like gang nights for the middle school group of kids. Middle school, if they want to attend. So we're, we are planning something that we want to start doing for the youth again.
Okay, good, good to hear. Um, I got a letter today asking if the gym would be available for rent to for extracurricular activities. I don't know if that's
I I think we do. No, I think we have a a policy on that. Really, I just, I'm trying to find my way through how how accessible our facilities can be this spring under whatever recommendations or requirements from the state. Um, you know, we need to make sure it isn't going to interfere with our programs, but even this summer, um I've had several um community members approached me about that already. Yeah, you know, I'm I'm not blocking on that one. It's just how can we physically do it and then make sure we will be having uh more construction on our side at the elementary, so there's some safety concerns there, but.
Well, I know.
Intermittent.
Okay, I know with the listening session that came up time and time again is community, you know, making sure our grounds are open after hours for the community to use and Dr. Long and I talked about that earlier and it sounds like it's a direction that we're going to go, so I'm happy to hear that.
Mark, can I just interject it for just a second?
Yeah.
Um so with that, I think before, and I think part of what Dr. Long has decided to decide and that is um that currently we were not charging for facilities. But due to COVID, we would have to now have a staff member that would either have to come back and clean and ensure that all of those components were taken care of based on the recommendations and the requirements. So that's something that I know that has been in the works and that we're trying to determine if if that's something that we can still offer as a free service that we've been doing to the community or if we would have to start charging the community. And I can tell you that across the state because I helped Julie pull some information that across the state. A lot of people are charging um now to allow for their employees to come back and um make sure that the facility is um has been cleaned up to the standards that it needs to be.
It's not intermittable, though. We can do this.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not, um, it's not off the table. It's just a matter of how do we provide that service now? What does that look like in this new scope of things?
And again, that's and maybe it it sounds like it's just common good practice. I don't know. I don't know what we were doing before if we versus um what what's the I don't know what the new standard is versus what the old standard. We had a standard before. Now we have a a new standard that may or may not be changing. I don't know.
But I'm willing to talk with it with uh parent groups or groups that want to do things. We could talk, we could figure this out because the way for us to figure out what that new normal is is to actually problem solve around some.
Yeah.
I mean, I I I I know the challenge of this is, you know, you made a comment about churches and all of that. The reality is we are tax funded. Um and we are, we are supposed to have a separation between the resources we have and any religious organization. I don't just mean Christian, I mean any religious organization. So so the 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 challenge is, is whatever we do for one group, we do for every group. And and the question that becomes, is that taking funding that would go towards program for kids at our public school to subsidize things that are in the community? And 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 yet what I also know is what equity goes a long ways. For example, in Medford, when we had the Southside Gym, when when South moved out, we worked with a couple of groups and they actually came up and they trained people to do the cleaning protocols and everything, and that's how they did it.
Sure.
And it there was still was a charge, but it was much reduced because we were confident that people did that and and they and they were willing to put that effort into that and that. So that's how you you kind of problem solve. And actually, when you have to clean a facility after it's used, you you sometimes have a little more uh
Sure.
Uh what I want to say, uh interest in making sure that people treat the facility right.
Right, right.
So that, these are good problems, these are good problems to be solved, okay?
Um, there was a there was a letter, I guess, uh we didn't read it at the at the listening session, but it it was from a community member. There was several concerns, but one of them was, and I think we touched on it a little bit ago, was was discipline in the in the students. I guess the long and short is what what type of the students are we attracting and bringing into our school and the challenges um that come with some of the behaviors, negative behaviors um of the students and and I remember having the same concern over the years and it almost you almost get a sense that the school is going into a survival mode uh to keep the numbers up rather than trying to excel in curriculum and attract um over a variety, I guess, of uh behaviors. And uh I just, I just want to make sure that that we don't get into the survival mode trying to preserve uh basically keeping the lights on and paychecks and let's make sure we're not losing sight of excellence. And um I think a prime example is when you have to have babysitters on the school bus um to help the bus driver because of the behavior that's with the kids. To me, that should be um a flag right there. I'm not saying we should do anything different. Maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't, but um when you, when you stand back and just look at the operation, um those are a couple of flags that I see and and others have seen and wrote in, wrote in about. So um I know why we do it, but just want to make sure it's for the right reasons. I think I had I think that covered most of my thoughts uh from the listening session. So I'll I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, anybody else have thoughts they want to share from the listening session?
Uh Katie, I think Dr. Long and or Diane would be able to furnish comments about disciplinary issues spread throughout the school. In the past, I think what we found was that if you look at some of the discipline problems um of kids that came from outside the district versus the number of discipline issues in the district. They were pretty well balanced between inside and outside. So I I'm afraid I'll have to disagree with the theory that we're bringing bad kids up the hill into our school. Number one, that's an insult to the kids. And uh Dr. Long can get those figures out and give them to the board. But uh in the past, we haven't um had that kind of an issue. It's been about fifty fifty. Dr. Long, would you care to comment on this?
No, I I think what I would just say is this, um our kids are hurting everywhere. This, the last several years have been hard on families everywhere. And we actually have some families who drive their kids from as far away as South Medford to Walmart so they can come up here. And their kids are sweet kids and they're not behavior issues. But the past couple of years have been hard on families everywhere. And um of course, we're going to be aware of issues on buses for kids who aren't in our district because for the most part, those are the kids who ride our buses because they're coming, you know, we provide those buses out of our district down through Shady Cove and Eagles Point for White City. Um what I know is these parents are choosing to put their kids on a bus and send them up here because they like what we do for kids up here. And um we have an excellent staff and because of board support, we've been able to keep our staff even in this, in this uh slump in enrollment due to COVID and all the other stuff around that. What I, what I think is, is if you talk with parents in this community and and I will have you know, um I spent the last two weeks after the listening session talking to middle school kids to to really, and kids kind of opened up to me about things that they have not been willing to share. And what I learned from it is it is probably harder to be a middle school kid now than it has been in a long time. And there's not a lot of things for middle school kids to do outside of school except game or just do things that get them in trouble. And so I really have appreciated the conversations in the last week or so of parents who've come to me, first of all, being honest about their kids struggling and secondly, saying being honest about their kids struggling. And secondly, saying, we gotta have more things in our community for kids, not just what goes on at school. And I think for the school, the whole thing around facilities discussion is how do we leverage the resource we have in this community of the school and come alongside parents and families, the landing, uh, the, uh, the churches that are here, any other group that really is interested in and helping kids make good choices with the options they have. So, uh, you know, I'm not a good kid, bad kid kind of person. I'm a, uh, we got some hurting kids and we've gotten some hurting families. And, um, we need this to be a safer place for us to help kids get through that and families grow through that. So, um, not going to talk statistically because I, 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 there, you can describe it all different kinds of ways. I'm looking forward to where we're going next. And I think we kind of lanced the boil and coming out of COVID and basically what it is, is we gotta work together because it's not going to work otherwise. So I actually see Steve, you and Mark are more similar in that piece because I've talked with both of you individually. The real question is, um, what is it that we gotta stop doing? And what is it we gotta start doing? So I want to pick that up with the, uh, the piece that I saw that came out of it related to the petition. And I'm going to see, I'm, I'm trying my technical skills here now. So I'm going to share something with you all on the screen and I don't know if we can.
I can.
Can you all see it? Okay.
I can't read it.
Yeah, well, um, I, I might go, when I go a little bigger, I think it does weird stuff if I do that. I think it'll go too big, but. Uh, we had some parents bring this document along with the petition. And this, uh, is the elementary building discipline chart from two thousand nineteen twenty. And then I think on the website, it was listed as the one for twenty twenty one. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't realize this document was on the website because that has not been my approach this year to how we, we are attending to discipline. But one of the things I've noted on this document is in yellow, there's a bunch of white space down there. And if you were to look at the one for the high school, it has consequences that go on beyond that, all the way up to the, you know, step nine, I guess it is. And, and so I think what, what parents write into this is, you know what? And, and I'm going to give this specific example under be respectful. The last one, it says sexual harassment and bullying. It looks like, looks like you can sexually harass or bully someone. Well, the first time you do it, you get a detention, but then you just keep getting the detention. And that's all the consequence. And that's not appropriate. And that's not actually what we've been doing. So I, I talked with Mrs. Gorman about why this document existed. And it came about because this was the direction that the elementary school went, uh, two years ago when we went to COVID, the, the COVID situation. And there was a law that came out in two thousand sixteen that said explicitly, there are too many suspensions and expulsions of, of, of kids in grades K through five across the state. So it was to the point where the legislature said, we're going to pass a law. This is ridiculous. So this reflects, except for those items in the be safe, which there are laws around that there need to be consequences all the way up to expulsion. It just said fourth plus of detention. Now there was a little caveat at the top that said, this is only a guideline. Administration reserves the right to determine what disciplinary actions are taken for any and all offenses in order to protect and maintain school harmony and safety. And so there were additional consequences that occurred and, and I believe even some suspensions, but the chart, when I saw this, when I, when a parent gave it to us, like, where did that come from? And then I saw, well, that's the residual from that. And so I, I totally get in this time of kids being dysregulated. And when we move grade six and seven back on the campus, um, and, and we're having issues with kids who are acting like middle schoolers only on steroids because it's been hard, that we needed to do some clarity around what we're really doing. And I, in fact, I think that was actually the, the gist of, uh, of the petition. This was one of the concerns that was raised in that. So I'm going to see if I can make this work. What I did is I went back and I talked with Mrs. Gorman and, and Mrs. Powell, who's been the discipline dean. And this is actually where, what, what I have revised based on what I thought we were doing. And actually it aligns more with the flow of things that we do K-12. Now, uh, clearly you have it off, you have things at the top that we just, you know, we don't tolerate. You, you are fighting and aggressive. We're not going to give you a bunch of teacher managed things on that. We're going to deal with that as, you know what? You gotta cool off. And in fact, we don't tolerate fighting here. You're, you're gone for three days. And then it goes up to four days. And if, if, if we have serious stuff going on and occasionally we will have something happen that's very serious, you know, uh, you can see the seriousness of those things, fighting aggression, drugs, tobacco, alcohol, paraphernalia, property damage, vandalism. Um, I can't read my writing here now. It's like I misspelled a fire, uh, false alarm weapons. I mean, and some of those things, they, they're actually are in law things that need to happen. So that's that part. The second part of that is the, um, be respectful. That part, that's all in yellow was blank on the other thing. And you can see that reflects more the way it would have been processed or a, a process for dealing with decreasing offenses. The bottom line is when, when we get to the point where we're, you know, we're doing two or three day suspensions, there has to be some other interventions that go on. And certainly parents are involved, uh, well before then, but don't, you know, the kids can also be very willful. And so we've had instances where we've gone all the way down to the possible expulsion. And the parents say, you know what? I've had enough of this. I'm going to pull my kid. They're going to do online or we're going to do something else. And at that point, we don't have really any input into what happens with that student. What we do have input into though, is how firm we are about holding the line on things. And I, and that's the other part, I think. With the closing out of parents from our schools physically because of COVID with, uh, you know, just the chaos in people's lives, I think parents like kids and staff have felt disconnected from, from working these problems. So this is the template that we are following and will follow for the rest of this year. And we can then review and make requirements from it. But it does align with, um, what, what the state says we can do. And you notice down there, I have some asterisks there noting the, the, the state statute, statute that, um, basically we're restricted from what we can do for kids in grades K through five. To some degree, it doesn't say we can't suspend. It just puts a lot of pressure on us to not go there because that isn't always the most effective or best thing for, for a third grader, for example. But when you see it, and then in fact, I actually, and, and I, uh, the board has this in your packet. There's a third page. Here's the high school one for this year. And you can see it's a similar schema. There's a couple, couple of minor variations um, in it, but, um, that was what we really should have had in place on our website. Um, so people could see the process more thoroughly. And um, what I had anticipated last spring is we were hiring a new principal. We were going to spend the summer working on all, all these things and find them. And when our principal was unable to come, um, this is a piece that I didn't learn about until parents brought it to me. And, um, I, it did not reflect what we were doing. So it's like, no, we need to fix it. So I do know the other part of this is making sure we have communication with parents and recognizing that parents are very anxious when their child is maybe out of control or they feel other kids are out of control and their kid is a victim of it. It takes a lot of time to work through that with people. But, you know, I'm so proud of our staff for their willingness to, to just hang in there with kids and families. And that's, you know, we just want to get, get through this, um, where we all can learn more about ourselves and how to regulate ourselves and then how to help each other. So I wanted to share that with you all. I know this is, uh, going out on a live feed. I want, one of our parents who are watching tonight to see this piece. And I would welcome any feedback, you know, in email, uh, the feedback email or to mine, either way, because this is what we are basing our discipline on.
Dr. Long?
Yes.
Um, so the, the discipline chart that you were looking at, the new one, it wasn't in my board packet that I saw. Can you email that?
I, I already have emailed it to you, Katie. I, I just did during the beginning of this meeting. I, I was trying to get copies together. I, I was in a eight hour training today that I mandatory. So, uh, yeah, but you have it.
Thank you, Dr. Long.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions about that?
What are we still doing, uh, round robin for the comments on the listening session?
We should.
All right, I'll go, uh, seeing how we're on the discipline part. Um, in that meeting, in the listening session, it got talked a lot about. Thank you, Dr. Long, for clarifying the schematic and the spreadsheet there. One of the big missing parts with COVID as it relates to discipline, which the parents voiced, and Dr. Long mentioned it earlier, is all these different extracurricular activities. Um, sports being one of the top ones to occupy our kids. And then there's nothing but positivity that comes out of sports. Um, one of the parents made an example of when you're on a team and you're in the day-to-day school life and you have bullying or any other disciplinary thing. And you go to be on a football team at, at the end of the school day, you know, you're still faced with your peers and your, your stu-, your fellow students, you know, we need to get the sports thing back going strongly. And one of the other things that I heard loudly from the group of parents was just the, the move back to normalcy. And I touched on it earlier, and I guess the way I would like it to be clarified is there was been, and it's been a mess, but, and it's really hard to follow and, and how to react and how to manage the school. But if we clarify it as required versus recommended, those two words have a lot of meaning the last two years. So moving forward, the requirements were one thing. And if there's still requirements, I understand that. If there's recommendations and then our school district is going to interpret those, we got ourselves into this, uh, you know, we're, we are a school board. And so there's, there's a couple of examples of the one parent that came in and she was new to the district and she dropped her daughter off and she wasn't allowed to go in the classroom with her daughter. In the back of my mind, I'm saying, is that a requirement or was that a recommendation? There was a number of those things that, that then we voted on. So what I'm seeing here tonight is interpretations of a requirement or a recommend, actions upon a recommendation without the board knowing about it, or an interpretation of a recommendation without us being briefed on it. We are the ones that are responsible for those. We are the ones that have to answer to a recommendation. If it's a recommendation or an interpretation of parents can't go watch their kids practice or the mom can't go into the classroom to watch, see what her daughter's getting into on day one, they come to us and they say, why are you doing it this way? And I didn't have an answer for it. I don't think any of us had an answer for it. My question is, was it a recommendation or was it a requirement? Now that a lot of this stuff is in our past, that's why I asked the question tonight. Is it a requirement that kids in a cafeteria have to sit six feet apart? Even they don't have to wear masks now, or it is a recommendation? So the management of this school district and the responsibility of us, the school board, need clarification on the managers, the teachers, the administration of this school. What recommendations are you implementing? And how does that affect the board? Because it makes us look like we made those decisions and not all the time have we been briefed on those. And I understand why, because it would be really hard to have, you know, eight or 10 teachers say, here's, here's the recommendation I'm implementing inside of my classroom. But, um, I just, again, am on the mindset of this thing is over, let's get back to normal. And if we're still policing our kids here and there and telling them they can and can't do that, then the next question is, okay, is that required from a state or is it a recommendation, recommendation from our district?
Thank you, Erin. Um, anyone else have comments on the community listening session?
Uh, Katie?
I'm listening here.
Wouldn't, uh, the first place to go be the teacher? Normally, if, if, you know, we got problems or something like that, you would go to the teacher and say, what's going on?
Oh, yes, there is. I haven't looked it up in a while, but yes, first we go to the teacher. Then we go to the principal and then the superintendent.
Yeah.
And I always mix that one up myself, but there, there is a proper order for discussions about these things. And I'm excited that they're looking at the discipline chart.
Yeah. So our, our staff would really need to be up to speed on some of the the, the required stuff versus the recommended stuff as well as ourselves, you know, it's a moving target because these things keep changing. And you know, like, uh, do the bus drivers need to wear a mask? And, and, uh, some of this stuff is kind of not always specifically listed in the discussion. You know, like this, this thing that, uh, ready school, safe learners and stuff is, they said, these are recommendations or, or what was the wording on that thing?
Yeah, I think basically everything is recommendation now. I have to finish reading it. Um, and, and again, that, that's where we go into, are we trusting our administration to make the correct decisions? And so maybe board even outside of a meeting just has to spend a little more time finding out the decisions our administration is making regarding some of these restrictions, requirements, recommendations, whatever they're calling them now, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, the, the pamphlet says advisory on a lot of the stuff.
Yeah, I think, I think it's all moving to advisory and, and I tried to read it all today. My family is one of the families with stomach flu from the school. But I do intend to read the entire packet and be aware of what it is we are required to do and what is recommended at this point.
Right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, uh, thank you, Erin. Thank you, Steve. Erin, were you done?
Yeah, I don't know. You want to hear any more out of me?
No, you know what? You're, you're, you are a voice in the community and, and it's good to hear. So, um, anybody else have comments on the listening session? Okay, so I'm just going to make mine really brief. What I was hearing from parents is, um, I think parents want a little more access to the school, which I've already talked with administration about. And, um, a little bit more of a feeling of community because in a small town like we live in, that sense of community is just amazing. And the last couple of years, we've been lacking in that, not due to anything our school did wrong. Administration, board, anything, just the COVID restriction. So um, in, in my personal opinion, the sooner we get back to some of those community events where the parents are welcoming the school, the better. I, I, I kind of think that's just my thoughts on the listening session. I super duper appreciate how many people showed up to comment and how respectful the board was in the administration. And from what I saw, a lot of people were watching on YouTube too. So I think that's an awesome thing. And that's the end of my comments on it. Get my agenda. I was checking on the kids. I think we're moving on to the OSBA, which is four point three, Dr. Long?
Um, yes, give me just a second here. It caught me up.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Cause I'm going to end up, I think I'm going to end up sharing my screen here in a minute. Um, in the board packet, there are actually two for lack of a better word, brochures are like 12 to 15 pages long or maybe a little longer. One is a pamphlet that describes the membership benefits of the Oregon School Board. One is a pamphlet that describes the membership benefits of the Oregon School Board Association. Um, and of almost every, I, I think there's a handful of school districts in Oregon that do not belong to OSBA. I know Portland Public Schools doesn't because they're so large and. They kind of were, had some issues a few years ago about OSBA being, I think, too conservative for them. Um, but the second packet is around PACE, which is our property and casual casualty insurance provider. And um, uh, Mark brought up some questions or concerns about OSBA. And that kind of, kind of unpacked, uh, well, how does it relate to, to PACE, our property casualty coverage? And what does that all cost us? And could we use our money better? I, I did, is that essentially what your question was?
Sure.
So I, I thought maybe to start off, um, if you could share Rachel with us, what it actually costs for us to log to OSBA. What services we are currently purchasing from them additional to that membership? Um, and then also what are our aggregate uh, costs for uh, comprehensive insurance through PACES?
I cannot tell you what services we purchase um, outside of, we do the legal trust. We also do um.
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars, I think, is what we have to pay.
It's, it's, it's. All right, stop. Sorry. Um, it's very minimal. Um. Uh, we pay a five hundred and forty-one dollar annual due. I don't know. I can't tell you what's encompassed in that. I would have to call OSBA. Um, we pay a thirteen hundred dollar web hosting, which has to do with our policies. Um, and they help us walk through our board policies and keep our board policies um, up to date and posted on our website. Um. The um, legal trust is two hundred and forty. And that is all.
Okay.
Besides some additional items that we choose to purchase throughout the year, um, different workshops or. Um, books or toolkits from them.
I think we also paid a one-time, uh, we have a one-time contract for around three thousand dollars for them to do a. Comprehensive review of our policies. And they have provided those. That's what the board tonight is starting to look at those, those. And that they have extended that so we can complete the process, I think, by next November.
That last year, and again, that's one of those additional services that we would purchase outside of what our normal. Annual component is.
Exactly. That's the only other one I'm aware of.
Yeah.
What about PACE, the aggregate ticket on that? That's a little more, because that.
Yeah, our PACE. This year was seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, and that gives us coverage in all our buildings, our vehicles, liability. Um, protects us if, if uh, some of our, our employees are doing their job and something happens, all that indemnification.
Yes, yes, it provides everything.
Okay, so in that um. In that packet, I think it's the PACE one. If you go in about five or six pages, I'm gonna see if I can pull this up on the. On the website and try to bravely share my screen if I can. There's a graphic in there. So this is. I don't know if I can move that over. This basically shows the relationship of OSBA to PACE. And then there's another organization called SBAO, which is Special Districts of Oregon, Association of Oregon. They provide the liability of property insurance for, I think, for some municipalities and some water districts and a variety of other things. PACE focuses specifically on educational, on school districts. And the graphic here, because Dave Harvey, who is the administrator who administrates PACE, ministers PACE. Um, they have a nine-member board. They have no employees because Dave actually works for OSBA. So PACE, the PACE Trust is a very large fund of tens of millions of dollars that have. Been gathered from school districts over decades that provide the self-insurance should something happen. And then if there are certain things that are like really crazy things that are really expensive to ensure. PACE then buys reinsurance through like Lloyds of London or other entities like that to give us further protection. We get our cyber protection through PACE. Um, but the reality is they have no employees. They function as a risk pool, insurance pool for all of us. And because we've belonged to them so long, there, we have an equity in them. And so I believe for the last few years at least, I don't know how long, Rachel, there's actually. An equity payment that comes back to.
Yeah, it's usually just shy or right around five thousand dollars and it's been coming for as long as I. Have been your business manager and probably even longer than that. Um, but looking at this graph, one of the key components that I'm looking at is all of, all of those services that they provide. Like their legal services or their risk management or their claims management underwriting and all of that. You can, their legal services is unlimited. You can call them a hundred times in a year and we're still only paying the same fee. Unlike if you were to call. Um, our, our district attorneys, which would cost us each time that we call them. Um, so that component, um, and if they can't get it resolved through their legal services. Then they'll advise us to contact our district attorney, but. It, it's an unlimited service, which some things, you know, are, are not unlimited and end up costing us hundreds of dollars. Because of, of those, whatever that service could potentially be.
So if, if we needed actual legal representation, it's covered a hundred percent for that two hundred and forty dollars?
It's depending on what it is. Most of the time it's a question, uh, can we do this or can we do that or what's the ramifications? Now, if it goes into something of um. Uh, uh, of where the district potentially could be sued because um, somebody got hurt or there was.
Make concern. That's what we're all worried about.
Yeah, um, the, the legal services, um, and, and Dr. Long can elaborate more on what those. Components are, but the legal services helps guide you through the process so that you're not going to wind up in a situation. Where you're gonna have to pay a lot of money for a, a, a legal action.
So I can give you an example from, in a past life, I worked in another larger district. And there were several instances where there were lawsuits because of something that an employee did. And I ended up, up north in Eugene in federal court. And PACE provided all the legal, there was a deductible, initial deductible. Um, and I, it was not a lot. It was a thousand or five thousand or something, but basically. Their, their interest was in mitigating any impact on the trust, so they had a stake in making sure that we had good legal advice. Because it would affect the insurance payout. So, so the legal advice, I um. Several instances, even in, in Bedford in circuit court here. Um, having them represented in something where a student was hurt in a fight with another student and they wanted to hold the district responsible. And because of the legal advice we, we got, the, we, we were found not, not responsible. And it's not because we weren't, but, but if you're a bad lawyer, it doesn't matter. It's decided that's what it is. So I actually, uh, if there were, for example, if there was an employee issue here. That might relate, might go to a termination, as soon as I'm aware of that, I contact them. And in fact, they have an incentive for me to contact them. If I don't contact them, then I go sideways. Our, we pay the first twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
But if I do, it's a, it's a fraction of that. So they really are trying to draw through their legal advice or legal support. To have people there who can help us navigate that. And then they have a vast number, OSBA and PACE have numbers of trainings. That we can take without charge. There's some that we pay for, but so I can learn how to be legally, um. Well, abide by the law.
Sure.
So, so I have found it invaluable for, I, there is no entity like this in, in Oregon. That's the climate.
Right.
Um, and actually, one of the, I think I. My zone meeting that was a couple of weeks ago, they actually addressed the risk management. And it's a, it's a service that they provide that they will send one of their regional risk managers. To come to our site on site and um, basically do a walk around. And an analysis of where we are at risk and help mitigate those risks. I mean, that's a service that they provide and that somebody comes out to our facility and reviews what risks we have.
They've done that twice in the time I've been here. The second time I had them come down to the NRC because I knew we were gonna have more kids down there. That, that's where we got the recommendation for security cameras. At the elementary, I had a concern because we were having vandalism when I first came. They actually had some money to help fund a small grant to help us see the cost of those. So they actually paid us part of the cost of putting cameras and because of the risk mitigation.
Sure.
And so, so you know, the OSBA part, I think, um, the challenge there, I guess I would say is. Well, how does OSBA help the board? And I think, and I'll just put it out there, I think in this tense time of divisive politics. Their board members are elected by their community and as you know, you can be all over the board as far as how you see things. When you come together, you're a board and it's possible for even a board to want something to happen in their district. That is not what the overall approach that all other school boards are doing. But I think on, on some issues around local control in the last year or so. There were more individual board members and a couple of boards that got pretty hot about that and they wanted OSBA to advocate for certain things. And um, OSBA, the, the, the choice for what they advocate for. Comes from their legislative and advocacy group, which is board members who you all elect beyond that. And that was not where they were. So the pressure on their executive director to do things, he really didn't have authority to do it. And that's, so, so like. You know, so how do you make change? Well, you can change who's on your board, but it still takes time, right? And, and I think that, that pressure point has made OSBA kind of a target in some ways because. We are, you know, kind of polarized as a society too. And um, I just have to tell you from my perspective, there is some irony in this because I know Portland used to play a bigger role in OSBA. And they, uh, many districts, uh, were frustrated that it seemed like some of the things OSBA was doing were the direction. That most people didn't want to go and eventually Portland left. And I don't know if that's the only reason. But I do know, um, that probably a more could, OSBA would, would have been perceived at that time as more conservative.
Sure.
But, but still, it's like, so what do they do? And I, and, and who could replace them? And how would that help our district? And that's, those are, those are the questions I think the board. If you're, if you're trying to figure out, is there something else to do? That's what you gotta be able to answer. I just don't have an answer for an alternative.
That was basically my question exactly is.
And I, I see great value in that.
Yeah.
And I don't see an alternative.
Right, so.
Right.
Dr. Long?
Yes.
About once a year, OSBA would come down to the Medford area, have a regional meeting. And they'd bring a lot of their. Uh, management people from OSBA lobbyists. And, and they would report what is happening at the legislature, what the state wants to do. How that would affect schools' operations. And then also then they survey the people at these meetings. Uh, Medford School District, Butte Falls Prospect. And they ask, uh, you know, different questions. And so there will be a list of, of concerns or priorities. And that ends up going back up with OSBA for them to either lobby or. Uh, attend hearings on bills and stuff in Salem to protect the school districts. And so it's a two-way street where they come down and ask, what do you guys need? And then they'll come down and report and say, hey, this is, this is coming down the pipeline and this is not good for their school district. So they may say, uh, based on what you're telling us, we will oppose this legislation. And, and so, you know, they've been pretty good about. Surveying everybody and then kind of finding out, well, what affects your district and, and. Here's what we think is bad based on our, our attorneys, our advice on the legislation and stuff like that. So, i- i- you know, they're an advisory uh, group that helps. Help the school, I think, stay out of trouble. I'll now go on PACE, which is. Um, PACE is geared towards the needs of school districts. And we turned a claim in here just a year or two ago on our gym. And how much was that claim? A hundred and some thousand dollars, Dr. Long?
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we've had multiple claims the last few years that we've turned into PACE. I don't think there's been any questions or any problems as to the service and flexibility that they have provided to our district. As far as taking care of claims that have been caused by somebody else. And so, you know. We have, I think, had excellent coverage from them. They also give us advice, uh, you know, if we think we, if we're getting into a problem. We call them up and say, hey, we've got an issue here. What do you think? And, and if we do that, they give us extra protection on waiving a deductible.
Yeah, man, I have it on the screen. You can see the deductible is twenty-five thousand and they wait.
Yeah, so they're, they're proactive. Murphy and I went to a class that they had. And, and because we were there, they came back and gave a one or a two percent discount on our insurance premiums. And uh, so uh, PACE is probably cost-wise. Cheaper than any other. Uh, arrangements you could find as far as insurance coverage because number one, they're not charging a profit. They're purely, we pay the claims based out of self-insured funds. The, you know, the. Like I said, the, the coverage, they have attorneys and everything else, so. I don't know that there would be any way we could better ourselves. Um, than what we've done in the past. So anyway, that's my two cents on the whole deal.
I, I would agree, Steve, that for, for what, for what they offer, the price is, is, is a bargain. I just, I, seems like I remember in the early stages of COVID when we were having discussions. There was a lot of discussion that went back to, well, we can't do that because PACE won't cover us if. And. I've never had an insurance company. Um. Say, you know, your coverage is void if you're stupid. I'm, I'm not saying we're stupid, but in the, in the private world, that's why you have insurances for mistakes. But, but PACE. And maybe I'm remembering it wrong, but it seems like I remember that being um, kind of a. Um. Almost an, an ultimatum. If, if, if you guys go that route, we're not gonna, we're not gonna cover you, so. Um. I don't doubt the service that's provided when we do have a claim. Um, it sounds like it's always, doesn't sound like we've ever had a fight with PACE, so.
No, no, and, and they have not, they have been really helpful to come down when I'd say. I mean, I felt comfortable saying, I think I got a problem here. Will you come look at it?
Sure.
Which, you know, um, there, we just have dealt with a lot of things to clean things up, so that's been good.
I guess I have a, a few comments if, if now's a good time for me to speak.
Regarding OSBA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
OSBA and PACE, so. Um. So I'll just, I'll give you guys a summary of the um. You know, every, every month I. I try to bring some feedback about a, a group of school districts and that's striving for better. Um, and so, uh, there's some discussions last night and a meeting last night. And um. And it's, it sounds like unless. An, an alternative insurance is really not available unless you get enough, enough students, so. And I think that's like, their findings were fifty thousand students, so that could be.
We got a ways to go, don't we?
Right, but Eagle Point has four thousand in their district, so you take, you know, you take twenty districts. Um, there was twenty districts on this, on this Zoom meeting last night, so. Um. So that, that's kind of a discussion for another time. I guess I'm just saying that. It's potentially not, um. It, it's potentially feasible, but in the, in the near future, I'll just. Read a recap of the, of the meeting last night, of the meeting last night. It's pretty quick, but. Um. OS, OSBA has um. Heard, heard the concern. Heard, heard the concerns of this group. And so they came to the table and asked. If the group would like to form a rural caucus. Within OSBA. This would give the more conservative school boards. A voice in OSBA that is currently being run and managed by the metropolitan vote. In the larger cities in the north. Um, so they said, yes, we'd like to move forward with this rural caucus. I asked a few questions and it sounds like, I don't understand the total logistics, but we have a representative at OSBA. And districts get a vote depending on how many students they have. So I don't know if OSBA goes to the legislature with one direction and it's the majority. And so if we're the minority, our voice isn't even getting heard at the legislation. Potentially, I, again, I don't understand how it works, but if it's strictly on. On districts with the biggest number, one number I heard was, um, Medford gets one or two votes. And they're not one of the bigger districts and they only get a vote or two. So. I, I don't know how many of us small districts would take to get one vote. So, that being said. OSBA is interested in a rural caucus. I think. The example they used was they, I believe they have a colored caucus to represent colored school board. Members or groups. So it would be similar to that, but it would be for the rural, smaller communities. So then on a second topic, they're looking to form a parallel association. Separate from OSBA called. Community School Boards of Oregon. This is a nonpartisan, non-political association. That is governed by the miss, mission and value statement, which I'll read at the end. We are looking to eventually offer the same things that OSBA does. But without the push of the metropolitan agenda. This would be a long-term goal to get up to that level, but would look at starting with an attorney. That could be of help with policy and, and hiring a lobbyist to bring our actual voice and advocacy to Salem. Uh, the dues would be a dollar or two, um, per student. Um, so not, and it's not set in stone, just a starting point. Want, want to make it attainable. The goal of this is the unity and community that this will create for school boards. That are wondering a different path. The long-term win of this would also be if we can get our numbers high enough. Uh, we still feel, and we still feel we're not being represented by OSBA. We could eventually have the ability to self-insure in a trust like pace. So there'd be, I guess, two different associations. There are one within OSBA and then, and then a separate one. Um, one of the individuals is also looking to get an initiative on the ballot for the twenty twenty-four election. And it sounds like they've done a lot of homework and have talked to. Uh, lawmakers and what that's required. And it's basically an initiative that. Makes local control. Solid, I guess, instead of we get it when someone's willing to give it to us, it would make it. Uh, a solid deal. So that's kind of the, the legal political direction they're going. They're trying to not. Make it political, but it does have to go through the legislation to get it. So. I will finish by reading the mission statement. That the, uh, group, Community School Boards of Oregon wrote. It's to equip and support local school boards and parents in providing all students access to an excellent education founded. In community support, local decisions and parental rights. Which I think we all agree on those. Uh, community support. The values, uh, board members are elected to represent the will of their community. School boards and parents will partner with teachers, administrators, coaches, faith-based organizations, secular organizations. Business professional groups, trade groups and businesses. Local decision, decisions. Local school boards know their community and students better than state or federal government officials. School boards ensure the highest educational opportunities are available for every child in the district. School boards are responsible for ensuring students are safe and healthy. Uh, parental rights. Parents oversee the upbringing of the children. Parents must be involved and informed for all decisions relating to their chi- child's school experience. This includes counseling and health-related services provided by the school. So that's the mission statement of this, um. Group of school boards that's looking to form an association to get representation in Salem. I guess at, at this point. I see, I see value in it. I don't. Know if the board wants to. Walk away, keep listening, pursue it hard and fast. I've attended most of these meetings. I know other members have been invited. I don't think too many have, have, um. Joined in on them. So I don't know. I don't know what the, what the board's questions, comments, concerns, uh, would be with, with, uh. Getting involved with something like this. So I would, I would love to have some feedback and. Potentially answer some questions if there is any.
Can I just clarify something?
Yeah.
Sounds to me like what the group's saying is, okay, we're gonna continue. To stay connected to OSBA.
Right.
And OSBA said, we will give you a seat on the OSBA board. Which is a large board representing rural schools. And, and, and so, so they're gonna continue to play with OSBA and use pace. But what they're asking is, would there, are there districts that would like to be a part of starting a separate organization and growing that? And at some point, the, the, the hope is that, that, that entity could. Spin off its own, uh, risk management and piece and provide that and essentially replace the function of OSBA.
I don't, I don't know that the end result is to get away from, uh. OSBA and have their own insurance. I think the end result is to get, be heard. In Salem and have some influence for our values.
So to have a lobbying voice separate.
Yeah, however that works up there.
Okay.
And, and if we can get that without leaving.
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, ultimately the value we're getting, it, it makes. Financially, it makes sense to scale with pace. But if we could just get. A little more support, I guess, uh, with, with the laws. I mean, ev- every legislation session, there's more and more laws. Uh, written and being handed down. And I, and it, it's not necessarily. Um, support or benefit for the boards. It, um, it's, it's. It's, it ends up real political and it's not the kids, it's unions and. Uh, administration and teachers and, and, um, legal stuff. And I think it, it gets. The, the further up the ladder you go, the, the less, uh, priorities put on the kids. So. I think this is just an effort to try to get, uh, to be heard and, and, um. You know, what's, what's important to, to our community is, is different than what's important to the big metropolitan communities. And. Unfortunately, we're kinda. I mean, how many times have we sat in these meetings and say, well, we can't do that. We can't do that. And so, um, I think this. This would be a. A mechanism to be heard and get some flexibility and leverage. That, that's, that's the goal, not to. Break off and abandon OSBA. It's just to, to be able to improve. Uh, what we're doing and have some flexibility. So I don't know if that clarifies it.
Yep. I support both factions, Mark, from my position on this board. Would, would be nice to have a subset or. Internal group at the OSBA representing the rural communities. And I also support forming a caucus outside of, or I guess the caucus is within the OSBA. And a separate entity through the legislative process to maybe be heard representing. Geographically our state versus a population.
Thank you, Aaron.
I, I have to agree with Aaron. I, I would like more information on. Rural communities getting more say. Um, with OSBA and legislation. So.
So.
Has my interest. I have no interest in going away from OSBA.
Sure.
But increasing our voice within OSBA. I am interested in. Yeah.
So one, one of the challenges, so this group meets via Zoom. Every couple of weeks, two or three weeks. There's, they're usually an hour meeting. It goes pretty quick. They're very well-run. However, if more than three board members. Tune via Zoom, then it, we, we know what that means. It becomes a meeting. So. If, if there are board members out there interested in this, I, I strongly. Recommend doing a little coordination and a couple of them, couple of members join in on these and, and, um. And, uh, lis- listen to what's, what's being discussed and. And any concerns or ideas, bounce them off of them. So the, the, the struggle is the three mem- the two-member limit, but. With a little communication, we can, um, maintain that, I think. So that would be. I guess my, uh, reply to, to learning more about it, Katie.
My comment to you, Mark, is that the Butte Falls School District is not a political entity.
Right.
And where do you get the funds to run the school districts in the state?
And come from you and I.
It comes from the people and it comes from the bureaucrats in the north.
Right.
Uh, politicians.
Right.
They allot certain sums. And if you. Go biting the hand that feeds you, you're gonna have trouble.
Well, biting that hand got some attention and now they're willing to give us a spot. Up there. So I, I understand what you're saying, Dan, but. Um, again, we need to be striving for excellence and not. Existence and I.
I wanna bite the hand. I'll bite the hand every day. I'll bite it today and I'll bite it tomorrow.
I don't think we're, I don't, I don't think we're necessarily biting the hand here. We're just asking to be heard. And unfortunately, politics come in, in the play, not here, but all the way up there. And, uh. I don't, I don't think we're being heard and, and it's not, it's not just us. You're talking, right now, there's. Twenty-five percent of the districts in Oregon are going this way. Twenty, twenty out of the two hundred districts sent.
That's ten percent.
Right? That's ten percent of the people said, we're willing to step out on a limb. It could. I don't think they're gonna step away. I think it could potentially bring more, but there's ten percent, whereas before it was zero. There was. I mean, twenty, twenty-some districts sent local control resolutions. And I don't know that it had anything to do with it, but now we have local control and we have OSBA wanting, um. Wanting to listen to us. So I, I think, I think we can be careful how we approach it and not necessarily. Uh, I think we can be politically correct, so to speak, and, and ask, ask to be heard and. Nothing we're doing is illegal or unethical or. Anything else. So they, at the, at the end of the day. The. The schools have to provide for the kids and the money has to come from somewhere.
Right, right. I agree with that statement right there.
So I can't see a scenario in the world where they're gonna turn off the faucet and say, sorry. There's fifteen thousand kids that are in this group. Um, they have nowhere to go, no, no more food, no more school, no more education, no more teachers. I can't see that happening. Cause you have, how many teachers that are gonna be up there saying? We need our jobs. We need, uh, schools open. We need our money. So. I can't see him just turning off the faucet and saying, close up school. And, and I think that's what the concern is. By, uh, threatening the sons. That, I could be wrong. I don't think.
More comments, Mark. I'd like to take this up again. But we've got some other items on the agenda and I'd like to deal with them first.
Okay. And appreciate any other concerns or comments, if there are any.
Mark, I, I do appreciate that feedback and. I'm, I'm a little curious about rural communities getting more say. And, and I think Aaron was too.
Yeah, the whole thing, if you guys gotta go back five, ten years and Dan's comments of. Up there, up north, that's where we get our money and don't bite the hand that feeds you. We all made a decision in a rural community to go charter with the promise that we could be different. That we would be allowed to think outside the box. That we could form new programs without following all the steps, i.e. hired unlicensed teachers to. Teach shop, et cetera, et cetera. So. We gotta think outside the box. And if this is getting away from the norm or whatever, you know. Let's keep an open mind with it. I, I just can't. Fathom the mindset that everything's fine and we shouldn't be adaptable to change. I'm always willing to change. I'm always willing to listen to other things like this. And if the end result of this latest action is OSBA recognizes, hey, we might need to represent. The rural community more so than the norm or where the most votes come from or where the highest population is. And we get representation throughout the state. For Eastern Oregon or smaller schools within the west side or wherever it might be. What's wrong with that? You know, why would we be paranoid about losing funding? You gotta get back to the fundamental. It's taxpayer money. These are public educators. We're supposed to represent all people, inclusive of all disciplines.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. Are we ready to move on to five point O, guys?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So we're at five point one, Safety Improvements Elementary Campus, Dr. Long.
Yes, um, I think you all know from when I first came here and, uh, for three months. And gave the board some recommendations on things that would stabilize the district and provide longer-term security. Um, that I have been focused on rebuilding, uh, repairing our facilities and rebuilding them so they're safe learning environments. We've been able to obtain, uh, two seismic grants, one for one point five million dollars, which did remarkable things to the. High school campus, one for two point five million dollars, which is about seventy percent complete. We're gonna have roofing. Done at the elementary campus. We actually have another application then to see if we could get our shop, a tech arts building rebuilt. We've invested in, um, making our natural resource center functional for learning and all of that. And I have, I'm coming here tonight with, with a, a different kind of ask. It, uh, it is for safety and security improvements at the elementary campus. But we're gonna have, in order to do this, we're gonna have to self-fund some of it. And, uh, I, I, I'm an old dog, but I did learn something in this process. Uh. I, I consulted with our business manager and, um, she's gonna have some information that will help. Uh, you think and maybe I've asked aside on this tonight, but what. But what I'm proposing to you is that we get our elementary campus secure and safe. We have, uh, some problems with the design of that. It's not ADA compliant, which could cause us some litigation issues. And also if someone could get hurt, we also have some other safety concerns. So I'm going to share my screen. I took a picture of the drawing that I have from, um. ZCS Construction, or ZCS Engineering and Architecture. Let's see if I can draw one here. And, uh, I have a big drawings of this in the boardroom, but this here. Is a drawing of the elementary campus. And if you take a look at it, maybe I can show it by cursor. This is the main building. Here's the office. This is actually the west end of the, of the gym right here. This is the courtyard. And, um, I, when I first came up here, I identified some things that really made me very nervous. Um, and it hasn't gotten better. If you looked down at this end of this building, these last two classrooms are actually added on to the original building. And when that occurred, the walk, walkway around here was made of an aggregate concrete, but it's really kinda like pads. And they all have loosened up. So we have numerous tripping hazards along here. Additionally. They're not wide enough for passage to be ADA compliant. Right here, um, on the north side and, and right across from on the south side. Um, the transition from the concrete to these pathways, uh, pavers were used there. And very, very well done. I mean, it was a good, good solution at the time, but. Um, we've had since then, if you know the construction of the building, the water comes off the roof. It pours out of some, uh, discovered drain, the drains, but it also drips off the edge of the. Of the metal roofing and all this concrete along here has degraded and it's, it's chipping away. But this section right here, we have a retaining wall that comes out a little ways and stops. Uh, every time we have a big rain, we have a mud flow that comes down here and we right now have a board that's kinda holding it in place. Um, but that, that's just one of the concerns I have. An additional concern I have is. That the only way for a student in a wheelchair to be able to get from here to the gym. They have to come out around the front of the school and come all the way around up here because there are stairways everywhere else. So, um, and, and then finally. What we learned, um, through COVID and, and the requirement that we secure our campus. Is that without having some type of, and I would say aesthetically pleasing would be really helpful barrier here. The, these classrooms are, our campus is vulnerable to anyone and any animal. If anything coming on our campus and particularly these front classrooms here. So the, the, uh, proposal that I have is about four and a half years in the works, drawings, uh. Now completed where we would, uh, put a second doorway into the office where this little closet, there's a closet there so that. Our, our guests could come in there, come to the office. And then we would actually secure this area right here on this side of that door. All the way down to here with, uh, uh, it's like a steel fencing, not a, not a. Chain link fence, but something that would be aesthetically more attractive. And then we would have gates, a long couple of gates along here. We would also have a gate here and fencing comes up here, a gate here and a gate here. And that allows us to secure. The perimeter of our campus during the day. Um, because this concrete has deteriorated. The, and, and there are some tripping hazards and the way the gates would spill out and we need to change our. Um, ability to make this, uh, wheelchair accessible up here with the new ramp coming up from the parking lot. Um, the proposal then also removes and replaces all this curbing. It cuts back probably about two, two feet or so. To replace the aggregate, all, all that with the new concrete work. Over here, the sidewalk where they poured it, you know, this was celebrating timber. They actually put, uh, two by fours between the curb and the sidewalk, which have since rotted away. So there's tripping hazards there now. And this area over here has also degraded from years of, of chemicals because of ice and all that. I think during the last ice storm. Um, when this was being plowed, um, by the city, they took out part of the curb here too. So. The, the, the proposal is to replace the, the sidewalk all the way here and make this all continuous. New concrete lined up with the, the line of the concrete that, that was this, this is showing the area of work. It's actually narrower than that. So that, um, there would be, uh, accessibility all the way around here for someone in a wheelchair. And then to remove this set of stairways, stairs here. And replace it with a ramp and the, uh, the grade works out so that they can accommodate the appropriate slope. To be ADA compliant. This would be a wider walkway with a, uh, rail on either side and down the middle. This actually not only helps, uh, someone who has mobility issues, but. It allows us to roll carts and AVs, equipment and all kinds of things up here without people lifting things upstairs. Uh, uh, we have a problem right now here, the, the bottom of the stairway here. The concrete slide was actually collapsed and there's a tripping hazard. We had an employee get hurt there about four years ago. Um, I just repainted about two weeks ago the yellow stripe there because it has to have a visual warning. So. The, the, the antenna of all this and, and, and then reconfiguring the office so it works well is. To improve the security and safety of students. We put some money in our Student Investment Act grant, grant a little bit. We had more last year. Um, what we're looking at is. The costs are going to escalate on us. I don't know that we're gonna have another opportunity to get this and you're saying, oh, that's great. But how do we pay for it? And, um, because of the way we've managed our COVID resources. And because our staff has stepped up and, and some of us have taken on additional responsibilities, we do have. Some flexibility in our general fund and, and in our federal monies. That I believe would allow this work to be added on to the work of Vitus Construction. As a, an amendment to the contract. The benefit of doing that is that if we put this out to bid, it will probably be higher because there's, uh. All the costs that go along with deploying your crew and all that too. So, uh, when I saw the initial, uh. Costing out of this, the amount is about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That is a lot of money. I, I thought it would be less than that, but as I've watched costs escalate and see what's happening, it's like. Uh, my recommendation after planning for four years or so. Is that we take care of these safety hazards, that we remove the, the ADA liabilities that we have here. That could related, uh, result in litigation and we create, finish the campus here. Um, we also are proposing because the buses for years have come in here and they degraded, that has degraded their parking lot. That there would be a replacement of the asphalt for this portion. We're not going to touch this here. Because it, we can seal it after the fact, but to touch it is to change our, uh. Handicap parking and there's gonna be additional design costs and we won't be able to do it. So, um, what I was hoping was that Rachel could share with you the financial pathway. That would allow us to do this without. Undermining our financial stability. If you could talk to that for a minute, Rachel. Um, I can leave this up or actually, yeah, I'll leave this.
Hold on, Bill. What, what does the four thirty buys? New concrete and fencing or?
It, it buys it all. It does all this work.
So the map doesn't show all of the work, but if you could recap it real quick, there's the, in the northeast, there's a new, the steps go out and. ADA ramp goes in. The black borderline is tear out and replacement of concrete.
Right, with wider paths and concrete, not pavers and things like that.
Okay, and then also, um, some type of security fence that looks good and not hogwire.
Right, with, with gates that have, um, the, uh. We have to, for fire marshal purposes, we wanna be able to lock those from the outside, but they have panic bars on them from the inside. So that.
And my, my question is. It's a modification to an existing contractor, which makes it more feasible, but. Would it behoove the district to maybe get another bid or two just to see where we're at with that? I, I mean, I know a lot of contractors and it seems like a lot of money for, uh, flatwork.
Well, I have all the detail on it because ju- the fencing piece with those gates, those gates are, um, several thousand dollars to put in.
Right, right. I didn't know if it was the, the mechanics of it, the contractual side, if. Four thirty with an existing contractor. Or, and you know, prevailing wage and competitive bidding and all that, is that part of it? Or if it, it's not an open bid thing where you could try to beat the cost?
Yeah, I can't try to beat the cost to, to do it, to, to go the other way, we would hard bid it. And I don't know that we can get what we need to get it done. And so we have a direct pathway to do that and we have a cost. And clearly what I'm looking for is for the board to give me, uh, authorization to move ahead. And then to work with the contractor, cause there may be some minor scope things we can do to get the cost down a little bit. But I'm just looking at the cost of fuel and materials and everything and I don't, this thing is just gonna get more expensive if we don't get after it.
Right. And then my last comment would be, um. Hopefully it gets done quicker than their current, their current, uh, progress. It seems like. The school has been under construction for a while now. There's been forum panels out there for, uh, ever since summer.
Yeah, and, and that has to do with the subcontractor. And so we, 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 when we got to winter, we saw that this, we needed to wait. So we've had that scheduled for this, uh, late, late spring, early summer to be done. They just have to do the roofing.
Copy.
And then painted, of course. They gotta paint, you know, finishes, so.
So it's, it's my understanding that the fence will be locked. During the day to keep, uh, kids safe. And then after hours, the rest of the facility, the open to the public playground, basketball.
What we're looking for is whatever it is that we can get back to where we no longer have restrictions to who can come on our campus and. What we need to do to keep it clean and safe and that the public would come back in. We, we have basketball courts. That probably need to be restripped in a few months taken out. We have playground, we have the best playground in, in the city. And, and just, you know, there's a benefit in having our community on our campus. There's a desire for a, a safe place for kids to come. During the summer and, and play games and things. And with our camera system, I'm not worried about the vandalism stuff. So yes. The, 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 the design would be secure during school hours and then the ability to open up afterwards.
Well, if this, if this helps promote that, then I'm, I support it.
Any other comments?
Did you say you need a motion to move forward?
Yeah, I would need a motion to, uh, actually before you do that, I really would like you to hear from Rachel.
We already know Rachel's got it all figured out. She's got a strategic plan to pay for it, so we don't even need to hear her say it.
Well, it's, go ahead, babe.
I'm just kidding.
Do you have a strategic plan? So if you would like to see it, I'm more.
I would. I would.
Uh, Bill, I'm gonna turn your, um, if you will stop sharing your screen, I can share mine. Alright, so can you all see that or do I need to make it bigger? Okay. So as Aaron alluded, I do have a strategic plan, which does involve a shift, a shifting of resources and the like. Um, you can see this first column right here that your current reserve fund balance, um, is one ninety-seven five. I'm not willing to drain that. Um, I, I really think it's important that we always have some. Sort of funding in that account. Um, so my, my thought process is to leave at least a hundred thousand into that account, which is this line right here. Um, the transfer that's gonna go in from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget is fifty thousand dollars. And then this is where we get into the creative financing. So we have funding in the Student Investment Act that we have asked for. However, those particular items have not come to fruition for this particular funding year. So we have talked to SIA a couple of times and asked if it's possible to shift some of those resources and they said yes. However, we would have to do the presentation to them and ask them to eliminate X to add Y. Um, which is, um, this one right here, um, is to replace the positive discipline, um, training and supplies. And, um. We had, uh, like twelve thousand dollars set aside for community engagement support. Um, we have used some of that, but we won't use twelve thousand dollars worth of that. So we're gonna ask to have some of those resources, um, shifted. In addition to that, the next funding cycle, which is twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, we had set aside sixty-five hundred dollars originally for, um, campus safety. Um, the original, um, allocation and the final allocation gave us an extra thirty-five, five. Um, so SIA, we would be asking for a total of sixty-one thousand two fifty from SIA. Then we would go to the S R funding and ask S, S R funding to replace the online curriculum that we currently have. Um, set aside for the, I think it's twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four year. Um, at seventy-two thousand for the campus safety. And then we still have unallocated funds that we're gonna be used for the twenty-three, twenty-four year that we're going to ask to be. Put into, um, the campus safety now. Um, all SIA and S R funding have to be approved through O D E. Um, so. If those two particular items do not transpire, this project doesn't transpire. So. It is very contingent upon those two components happening. Um, and then an extra, um, next year's budgeting twenty-two, twenty-three is a hundred thousand, which is usually your. Allocation for capital projects anyway, every year. Um, we usually budget between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, take that cost of four thirty-five away from that for the project leaves you a contingent save about forty-five thousand dollars, forty thousand. That's the plan. Um, I have talked to Dr. Long and have been adamant that if SIA and O D E do not approve that. This project does not, not go forward. So, yes, Aaron, I do have a plan.
Well, I just have one more comment. When you're done with this, um, my taxes are due April fifteenth. Can you magically come down and straighten out my finances? And make four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars appear out of thin air for me?
Um, if I could do that, I would do that for myself, needless to say. But I appreciate that. Thank you, Aaron.
So, so the ask is this, if there was a motion, it would be, and you can correct me, Rachel, if I leave something out of this. It would be the board, uh, the motion would be to authorize the reallocation of general, uh. General fund, a budget resources as described. And directing the superintendent to move forward with securing the reallocation of grant funds to complete the funding. For these safety renovations. Is that sufficient, Rachel?
I believe so, yes.
And then the second part of that is if, if, if that is accomplished, the board would authorize me. To pursue, uh, an amendment to the contract with Vitus Construction, uh, finalizing the terms of the work.
So I would like to make that motion, but don't we need to include Dr. Long, the language of if the funding? The trigger funding doesn't happen, it kinda kills it.
Yeah, he did that in part two, Aaron.
Okay, okay. So motion so identified, motion made.
Perfect. Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Thank you. That's, that's a good thing for our community and our kids.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Thank you, Miss Aiken. Um, we can move on to five point two. Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three district calendar, Dr. Long, action.
In your packet, you have our first and best attempt at a calendar for next year. It follows the similar pattern of this year. Um, you might note it includes some snow makeup days in January and February. This year we were able to use those to make up days. That we lost in December. Um, we have placed as a placeholder, school board meetings on the second. Monday of every month. You have not, you are not approving that tonight. You will approve that when you do your organizational meeting. But we wanted you to see what the pattern would be, you know, what works out pretty well next year. And this would provide for a whole calendar and the instructional minutes that we need by state, uh, regulation. So what I'm looking for is an approval of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar for Buteville School District, anyone?
I'll make the motion that we approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
I second.
All in favor? Five twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, board budget calendar, Dr. Long, action.
So I'm gonna, uh, make a request of the board. Uh, this is our recommendation for the board budget calendar for the coming year. Normally, we would have an organizational meeting right after, uh, first of July. Uh, because there was no school board election this spring, the law actually allows us to push that out a little further. And, um, my request is that the board would schedule that and follow the same pattern of the second Monday of the month, making that August eighth. Um, that would be helpful for the projects we have going on this summer. And, um, my relationship with my wife to take a couple of weeks to get up. So, um, yeah. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve this calendar, board, uh, budget calendar for the coming year, twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three.
I will make a motion to approve the twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three board budget calendar. On favor? Five point four, Bee Falls School District Budget Committee Member, Dr. Long, action.
I am pleased to bring to you, uh, uh, application for Barbara Sunny Milton, uh, resident of Bee Falls. Who has expressed an interest in being, uh, on the budget committee this spring. You can see she has a background in education and, uh, and, and interest in what's going on in this community. So present it to you to consider, uh, nominating and second and add her to your budget committee if that be your will.
I think it's amazing she is interested in serving on the budget committee. We really appreciate her application. I make a motion to approve. Is it Barbara Milton?
Yes.
Barbara Milton's application to be a budget committee member.
I second.
All in favor? So we're gonna move on to five point five, S O E S D Budget Committee Member, Dr. Long, action.
Um, yes, for the last, um, four or five years, you have supported me being on the E S D. Um, budget committee, which allows representation of a small district on that committee. My term is up, and they've asked that you consider reappointing to me as the board to that, uh, to be allowed to do that. And then their board would consider adding me to that budget today. So the motion would be, if you support it, to allow me to serve on the S O E S D budget committee. Should their board, um, approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dr. Long, thank you so much for serving on that mini.
Thank you.
Five point six, Board Policy Section A B, First Reading, Dr. Long.
Um, yes, you have each received a packet of board policies to review. And in some cases, to update from our existing policies. Um, this section is Section A and B of the Board Policy Manual. Focuses on, uh, board governance and operations. This is the first reading, and essentially what we want to do tonight is simply read into the records. The list of school board policies that you're under consideration. You would come back next month and, um, have a discussion around any of those changes. I think I shared with most of you, I have, uh, gone through their recommendations. And then I have noted where you have already made decisions in your existing policies, so that you can see what the, what the changes are. Um, so, uh, Board Chair Missfeld, if I could read these into the record, would you allow me to do that exciting task?
Yes, please, Dr. Long, thank you.
I can't do it as a wrap, but we'll get through it, okay? Um, Board Policy A C, non-discrimination. Discrimination Complaint Procedure is Board Policy A C, the Administrative Regulation. Board Policy A C A, Americans with Disabilities Act. We have chosen one of the options there. And then, uh, Administrative Regulation A C A A R, Americans with Disabilities Act. And then the second A R two is the A D A Grievance Procedure. The Policy A C B, All Students Belong, you've already passed that one and approved that one, and there are no changes. But there is an Administrative Regulation A C B A R, which is the Biased Incident Complaint Procedure. Board Policy B B A, Board Powers and Duties. Board Policy B B A A, Individual Board Members Authority and Responsibilities. Policy B B B, Board Elections. Policy B B B A, Board Member Qualifications. Board Policy B B B B, Board Member Oath of Office. Board Policy B B C, Board Member Resignation. Board Policy B B D, Board Member Removal From Office. Board Policy B B E, Vacancies on the Board. Board Policy B B F, Board Member Standards of Conduct. Um, there's two, uh, two options on that one. Uh, Board Policy B B F A, Board Member Ethics and Conflicts of Interest. Board Policy B B F B, Board Member Ethics and Nepotism. And Board Policy B B F C, Reporting of Suspected Abuse of a Child. Board Organization, Board Organizational Meeting is Policy B C slash B C A. Board Policy B C B is Board Officers. Board Policy B C D is the Board Superintendent Relationship. Board Policy B C E, Board Committees. Board Policy B C F, Advisory Committees to the Board. Board Policy B D slash B D A is Board Meetings. Board Policy B B C is Executive Sessions. Board Policy B B D is Board Meeting Procedures. Board Policy B B B C is Board Meeting Agenda. Board Policy B B D G is Minutes of Board Meetings. Board Policy B B D H is Public Comment at Board Meetings. Board Policy B F is Policy Development. Board Policy B F C is Adoption and Revision of Policies. Uh, Board Policy B F C A is Administrative Regulations. Board Policy B F D is Board Policy Implementation. Board Policy B F E is Administration in the Absence of a Policy. Board Policy B F F, Suspension of Policies. Board Policy B F G is Board Policy Review. Board Policy B G is Board Staff Communications. Board Policy B H slash B H A is Orientation of New Board Members. Board Policy B H B is Board Member Development. Policy B H D, Board Member Compensation and Expense Reimbursement. Board Policy B H E, Board Member Liability Insurance. Some of those are new policies for you. They do delineate more clearly the role of board members and the relationship to superintendent. Which it's always good to have policy in place before you run into issues rather than after. With that, there's no action required by the board to today, but, um, would encourage you to continue to review those policies. And come prepared next time to discuss, have noted and discussed any concerns you may have. I would invite you before the next board meeting, um, Mark and Katie and I are going to meet to go through them. And if we had feedback from you on areas of concern or areas of support, or that would be helpful. Because we could probably make the conversation at the next board meeting really profitable and move towards adoption. Okay.
So, Dr. Long?
Yes.
So we direct our comments to you?
Yes.
Cause if we direct comments to Katie and Mark, that creates a quorum.
Well, it could create a conversation, you're right, which could be a meeting. So I will make sure that I share them in that meeting.
Right. Okay.
So, Dr. Long, I, I really appreciate you doing that first reading, because that is a mouthful. I highly encourage everybody to read through these. Um, I've already read through things once. I have a couple notes. Uh, and I encourage everyone to get in touch with Dr. Long ahead of time. Um, with questions, comments, concerns about these, to save us time in our next meeting. So that Dr. Long, Mark and I can go over that conversation when we meet up. Does that cover that part, Dr. Long? Perfect, thank you so much. So we're gonna go on to five point seven. Um. I don't have everything written down. It's the grant you need to talk about.
This is a grant, uh, request and intent to file a grant application with the Gordon L Wood Foundation. Our policy is that when a person does this, they're supposed to make sure they have board approval for it. Uh, Christopher Mathis brings us, uh, the funding agency is the Gordon L Wood Foundation. Um, he is requesting ten thousand dollars and, um. Looking to renovate two upstairs bedrooms, one bathroom and a common area closet, some stairway in the N R C classroom number two. And provide shelter to students who have housing disruption issues. That's part of our long-range plan. And the Gordon L Wood Foundation has encouraged him to apply for these funds. So I'm looking for the board to have a brief discussion about whether you want to support this. And then, um, hopefully then, uh, motion to approve his application for this grant.
Does anybody have anything they want to discuss about this grant?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Gordon L Wood application for the grant.
I will second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Long. So we're gonna move on to five point eight, um, COVID Hazard Pay, which is something that we were talking about. Recently, um, at the town. And. So I had a conversation with Dr. Long where the school is able to provide small amounts of money. Um, I'm talking a couple hundred dollars tops in COVID Hazard Pay to the teachers. And staff members that have worked for us over the last couple of years. And it's something we're looking into doing at the town, and I would like to propose it to the board. As just basically a small bonus we could offer to our teachers and staff. Uh, for working tirelessly and continuously through. All the various regulations and restrictions we've had to go through. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would direct a question to Rachel on this. Uh, seems like I've seen other schools offer COVID, uh, hazard pay. Is that correct?
Sorry, it depends on how you're funding it. If you're funding it through S R funding, you cannot call it a bonus. Um, so, uh, a lot of them are calling it a hazard pay. If you fund it through general fund, you can call it a bonus. You can call it an add a, add a boy, add a girl. You can call whatever you want, really. Um. It, yes, other districts have been doing it. Um, I have seen, um. Multiple districts do a stipend amount to their employees for hanging in there through. And having to comply with all of the additional hazards and regulations that have come along with COVID.
So, sounds like we would be better to call this hazard pay.
My understanding.
We can call it hazard pay, yep.
Uh, leave it up to Dr. Long, but anyway, it's just a comment. Is it for all teachers, or is it for one, is there a varying degree of who gets what, or is it all inclusive?
It is. It, it would be, um, cause I did discuss this with Dr. Long a little bit. It would be a COVID hazard pay, depending on how long our staff has been with us, and it's really not gonna equal too much. Um. But per employee, uh, I think the top dollar amount take home we could do would be about two hundred dollars. And those are the ones that have been with us the longest. It would be less for people that have been with us just this year versus last year. Um.
I, I think in talking with Rachel, yeah, in talking with Rachel on how to fund this, really. It seems like anyone who's been here since March, mid-March of two thousand nineteen, right, frankly, it's been, God, twenty, twenty. Yeah. We would just do the, 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 the last two years when we've had COVID. Been twenty-four months. And, um, we were trying to figure out a way to do it equitably, but have everyone in the same boat. And it seemed that if we just said, if we calculated, and, and this sounds small, but it adds up, ten dollars per month. That you worked here during that time. So, and, and it would be that you worked. So we have some ten-month employees and some twelve-month employees, okay? So if I'm a ten-month employee, and I was here when the pandemic started, and I'm still here, I would have been here for twenty months. So that'd be two hundred dollars. So the other part of this, though, is that, you know, if you give someone two hundred dollars. And then you take out all the taxes and the, and the person, everything gets small. Um, I asked, uh, Rachel to figure out if I was gonna test her math. If she could calculate a way that we could actually say, no, you get two hundred dollars and the district would cover all those costs. And what would that be then? Is that right, Rachel? Yep, so, so, uh, give them, give, give them, and, and it would be, so if I was, if I was hired in the last three months, and I was here for three months, that'd be thirty bucks. And then we pick up the, the cost, okay? What, what you need to recognize is there've been a lot of people leaving and, and all that in the midst of pandemic. And particularly with the requirement that we hire vaccinated people this year, that was the additional piece. And I, our employees have just sucked it up and made it work. So, uh, if we were to do that, if a person was a twenty, had worked twenty months in those two years, they'd get two hundred dollars. And then we would cover the additional employer.
So that's about a third, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it might be a little less than that, because we're not paying insurance stuff on that. It's just. So will you give us some numbers, Rachel, so they can decide if that works?
Sure. So, uh, based on the employees who restarted the pandemic and who are here as of this last payroll. The total salary amount comes out to, well, depending on how you wanted to do it, and this is at ten dollars a month. Um, for those employees that have worked, comes out to seven thousand eight hundred dollars. The associated payroll costs come out to two thousand nine seventy-eight. For a total funding of thirteen thousand seven fifty-six. At ten dollars a month.
Would you repeat the figures again, please, Rachel?
The bath doesn't have, Rachel.
It should.
No, I was expecting the thirteen thousand number, but. Does that make seven, eight, nine? That's like ten something.
That's the way I figured it.
Oh, well, where's that dollar amount coming from?
Two thousand, sure.
You're right. So it's my formula. Hold on. Because I doubled. It's ten thousand seven seventy-seven, ten thousand seven seventy-eight. I doubled, I doubled one of the formulas, sorry.
No, that's fine. You, you went the right direction on, you know.
Well, now I gotta fix this one.
That would be a ten dollars.
That would be a ten dollars. And then if you did it at fifteen dollars. Um, your salary would be eleven thousand seven hundred. Your associated payroll cost would be forty-four sixty-seven. For a total of sixteen thousand one sixty-seven.
I vote for the latter. Let's give him a bonus. They made it through it. You know, ten dollars sounds kinda cheesy. And I'd have to agree with Erin at, you know, fifteen. Even though it costs more money, fifteen is a, a little more of a genuine gesture. Let's call it a gas bonus so they can drive up to our school.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion to go with the, the fifteen dollar per month, like the higher dollar amount?
Motion's all made.
Rachel?
We can, I can give you a figure for any dollar amount that you would like. Um, keep in mind that depending on, um. How you wanna do the funding, we have, we may have to, um, correct some budgeting items. However, I can tell you that, um, taking this from general fund would probably be your best bet. And you have enough money that you have saved over the year to cover those costs. And my recommendation would be to take it from general fund and whatever that dollar amount you would like to look at.
Um, what, what if we did twenty? What would that look like?
Dr. Long, could you step in here and give us a recommendation on what you and Rachel feel are appropriate for our staff? A good round number after taxes, something that we can afford. And, I mean, we could, we could spend, we could do this all night and keep raising it. But I guess with a little guidance from you and Rachel, what do you think?
Well, I certainly think more than ten.
Right.
So collectively, Erin, I was gonna shoot for the twenty-five thousand dollar mark collectively, so that's salaries and, and the. So, collectively, Aaron, I was gonna shoot for the twenty-five thousand dollar mark collectively, so that's salaries and, and the associated payroll costs.
So, that's about twenty-five dollars then?
Um, yeah, so I kept at twenty, at twenty dollars, I get a total of twenty-one five fifty-five. And at twenty-five dollars. I get. Twenty-six nine forty-four, nine forty-five.
And you were shooting to be around twenty-five?
Yeah.
How many total are we talking, Rachel, total number?
Fifty-two, uh, no, sorry. Uh, forty-six.
Forty-six, okay.
I'd like Aaron's idea of fifteen dollars. A month per employee, that's my vote.
I say we go a little less than Rachel's top dollar amount at the twenty.
Oh, fifteen.
Dan, that's fifteen.
I'll change my vote to the twenty to go with you, Katie, and let's give him a nice bonus that means something that they actually see and feel. If it's in our budget for twenty-five, I'm with you, Katie, twenty dollars a month.
I'll vote for twenty, actually, hold on here, I, my wife is an employee, so I should probably. Stay in from this altogether.
Good job, Mark.
Very good.
How do we fix this, Dr. Long, we've got a couple fifteens, a couple twenties?
Well, you could split the baby, um, here's what I would say is. I'm an employee here. And I don't want the money, but if you give it to me, I will give it to a scholarship fund. But I really think probably the twenty is where you need to go. I, I think, I know the size has been smaller and bigger in other districts, actually, it's been bigger in most districts. We are really tight, we, we have a lot on our plate to get done here, but I think if you went with twenty. Given your conversation, I know you really appreciate our employees. And, um, I, I, I just think it honors them, it's a one-time expense and you're done. And that would be twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars, yes, it's general fund, yes, it's tight, but. But I've had employees who've covered shifts for each other and cleaned toilets when that wasn't their job and all that, and we've just made it work, so.
I make a motion to revise the dollar amount to twenty dollars with the vote of four people, Mark abstaining. Who's in?
Uh, I will second your vote, Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There we go, motion passed.
Thank you, guys, that, that's amazing, this is really cool. It doesn't a lot, but it's something.
Rachel, would we include those in next month's payroll then?
Yeah, so legally, I can't run a separate payroll, um, it, it's not recommended that I do it that way, because it looks like you're trying to, um. Um, not pay as much taxes, um, to do it like that, and since payroll has already been submitted for this payroll, we'll have to include it on the, on the April. Seventeenth payday.
That's somewhere under.
Can I make a, a comment about this? Um. So, I'm, I'm a firm believer in performance-based pay. And I have. Have asked in the past about. Bonuses, wages, what have you, to, um. Based on performance, not time put in, or, or, um. Qualifications and, and that sort of thing, so, so, I guess qualification shouldn't be it, but, um, education and time put in, um. And in the past, it seems like the, the unions could potentially get in the way of performance-based pay. But I would love to see our district figure out a way to do this more often. Um. To keep, keep, uh, the ones we want here, to keep them here, we've had a. Heck of a time of turnover, I, I don't know the inside mechanics of why. We have such a high turnover, but, um. I know, I know that strong performance individuals and, um, hard workers. Can. Give. They can receive higher compensation, so. I would like to see us get to where we could try to accommodate that, I know we don't have an endless supply of money. Um, but. Union negotiations are coming up. And I think that's something that should be brought to the table with the unions, to be able to. Pay employees. Um, more based on performance and not get retaliation, I don't know if that's fair, or if I'm completely out to lunch, but. It's, it's something that, to me, is, is, um. Seemed like a hurdle that we've never been able to get around, so.
So, Mark, I can, I can answer a little bit of that, so, we have to comply with, um, pay equity, and so. Um, that's saying that if you're in X job and you're a male. You have to pay the female the same ju- the same amount if they have the same set of experience, when you start getting into. Performance is, issues, it become, it becomes an equity issue, which then can, can cause you some issues. We're able to do this particular, um, hazard pay. Because we made it equitable across the board, and we said, if you, no matter how many months you've been here, you've been, you've been paid if you were employed. From the pandemic to now, at any point during that time. Um, you're getting paid the same amount, no matter who you are, um, at the twenty dollars an hour, um. If, if during negotiations, you do some sort of performance, um, I'll let Dr. Long go into that, but. I have not seen that in any district that does it based on performance.
And, and the, we would address that in an executive session, and with the board as sort of directions, that's where we talk, we have to talk about it.
Okay. Quick question, Rachel, where does, where does that requirement come from that we have to pay the same?
The pay equity?
Yeah.
I think there's an O R S out there, I can look for it, um, I can't.
It's from the state, not the union.
Right, the state law, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Um, we're gonna move on to six point one, annual renewal, non-renewal, contract extension. And non-extension of teachers and administrators as required by Oregon statute statutes. Dr. Long, action.
Yes, on this single, uh, page, license personnel action sheet, you'll see there are four categories of employees, this is specific to licensed teachers. And so, when we hire a teacher, there's a three-year probation period. And they get one-year contracts, and then they need to be renewed every year, my recommendation based on performance. Um, for, is for our new hires this last year, is that the board offer them a one-year renewal for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and that would be for Candace Bacon, Elijah Bowers. And Erin DeCarlo. And so, then, the second category, there are then those educators who have completed their third-year probation. And they move to a contract status, and under Oregon law, they are offered a two-year contract. And so, uh, the, the, uh. Two, uh, employees we have under, under that status would be Benjamin DeCarlo and Terry Olson. And then under contract educators who are up for renewal or extension, because they've been here longer than, well, it'll be five years at that point. Uh, you can see the names of them, Shayna Brown, Ashley Childers, Trina Frye, Maggie Smart, Psy Kerrigan, Jill DeFriend. New Friend, uh, Christopher Mathis, Sarah Chavez, Danielle Fekovich, and Sartie Powell. And then finally, we have these two, uh, licensed educators have given me their resignation, I actually have been talking with them this spring, as they've been. Exploring some other things that they wanna try, and actually not even in education. And, um, so they gave me their resignation, and I really appreciate them doing this now, cause contractually, they don't need to. But it allows us to post the positions and, and start to pursue teachers right away, in fact. We will be posting these positions tomorrow, so my recommendation to the board is a motion to approve contracts as listed below. And, um, there you go.
Who are the two teachers with the resignations?
Oh, Laurel Patterson, Dr. Laurel Patterson, who's our science teacher, and, uh, Sean Young, who's our high school English language arts teacher.
Okay.
I'll make a move.
I, you, you made a motion, Mark?
I did, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, seven point oh comments for their agenda items from the board.
I have none.
Thank you, Steve.
All, uh. I got, uh, two comments to make, I guess. I don't know if we've gotten anywhere with, with opening these meetings up to the public. Or not in the future, but I know the public's. Uh, after that, so keep, keep pressing forward with that. Um, the other. See, the other comment I had was just. Kinda in, in general, um. My thoughts as far as the discussions we have here in the meetings. Um. I just wanna be clear to everybody that. If, if I do disagree, it is not personal, I don't, um. I don't try to bring any, uh. I'm trying, I try to keep it unpersonal and unpolitical, um. I do feel there's value in having a five-member board and five, five opinions, and, um. So, I'll continue to bring. Um, I guess my values and the, and the values and concerns I hear. From the part of the public I represent, and. I try to be respectful about it, and. But just cause I disagree, I, please don't take it personal, and, uh. We can have a vote and, um. And move on, and I'm, I'm fine being. The minority on things, it, it doesn't bother me a bit, so. I just wanna, I just wanna make that clear, that it's, it's, it's nothing personal, so. Appreciate everybody's efforts.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else have comment?
No, sir.
No.
Aaron?
I have no further comments.
All right.
Okay, uh, I, I, I just wanna say thank you, everyone, Mark. I, I appreciate your opinions a lot. And, um. I'm sad about the resignations, but. Blessings to our teachers that are moving on. And, um, I, I would like to see a little more parent involvement at schools, I think a lot of parents have said that. Hopefully, we could pull off like a talent show or something towards the end of the year. And I, I really appreciate the administration. All of our staff members and, and our board members, a- and that's the end of my comment. So, uh, are we ready to adjourn?
Oh, I have a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Now. I would like to know that we're having a marketing program this year. And this, so that we can.
Yes, I've already, I've been working with Mark Bennett on that, and, uh, we're moving forward, we're looking at an open house sometime in mid-May. We, I think it's, uh, third, Thursday in May is what we're targeting. Be like the seventeenth of May, let's just have to finalize, make sure I'm not stepping on top of some other activities, yeah.
I would like the board to get a copy of the memos that you have, Mark. That you read from, I'd like to see that. Uh. I'll make it candid, I'm not gonna mince wood with you. You have in the last six months attacked almost every entity in the state of Oregon dealing with the education system. And I do not feel that we are a political entity. To do that, it's not our job. Admittedly, if you disagree with a certain section, that's fine, you are entitled to your personal opinion, that's fine. But to attack the state, the Department of Education, the governor. O S B A and then PACE, oh, you've retreated some from it. I, I think that you need to read through the documents and maybe read focus. Number one, number two, on that last board meeting, you need to correct your statement, you said no children have died of COVIDs, that's not true. Because I went home and I went onto Google, there's been one thousand nine hundred and, excuse me, one thousand ninety-three children to date. That have died of COVIDs.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else?
Do you need a vote to, uh, adjourn?